Okay.
Great. I see everyone except Bill, and Bill said that he was gonna try to come but was not feeling tip top, so he might not last for the evening, so we'll see what happens. Hello, everyone. Does anyone want to speak to privilege at the floor?
If you do, raise your.
Yeah, raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Seeing none, I will move on. The minutes of the January 21st meeting were sent out incredibly late, but they arrived today. Does anyone have a chance to read them?
No.
Okay. Anyone? Well, let's take a minute or two and read them if you have a chance. Oh, I hear it's Bill, good. Hi, Bill. People are reading the minutes and then.
Okay. All right, I've got a few changes to them, so.
Okay.
All minor.
Okay, so Bill has an amendment.
Yeah, I've given me three tiny changes, and I will say, I'm a little under the weather, and the good news is when I talk, I cough. So I won't be talking too much this meeting, so. Under number three about the signs, I credit where credit is due. I'm pretty sure, Tim, you put the sign up at your property, I think, and I marked it the one in Speedsville. So I believe you should say Bill, Ernie, Mark, and Tim put up signs.
Okay.
Unless Tim didn't do that and Mark did it for you.
Mark did it.
Okay, so Bill, Ernie, and Mark.
Tim and I collaborated on it. Tim met me out there and helped.
Okay, great. I'm gonna put that in. Thank you.
And then only then slightly more important, on number seven, there's a phrase where it talks about the conservation development. It is, it says keeps density neutral. I think I should say is density neutral. Just, you know, right, because that was the point. It's made clear in the early comment after that, but that's. And finally, in number eight, I do not know what I said, but I don't think I said that the task force had agreed in a one-step process because the task force never discussed.
No, it wasn't the task force. It was the review committee.
Yes, that should probably say review board. Yep, okay.
And Jean and I have a couple things as well.
Okay.
In number one, I think it would just help the sentence that starts, "The motion was passed with Murray voting nay", to say be Murray, because there's two Murrays used in that item.
Exactly, okay.
And then in number seven, the sentence, kind of, I think it's the fourth sentence, Michelle said she didn't understand the objection to having this in the land, I think should be in the law.
Ah, I think you're right. I think you are correct. This is the problem of not actually reading carefully. Okay, great. With that, anything else? With those changes, does someone want to move these?
I'll move them.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? The minutes passed. Thank you very much. And I let me save these so that those things don't go away. Okay, they're saved now. Great. The town council report, Tim Murray.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Last Wednesday, we had our town business meeting. And preceding the meeting, we had a public hearing regarding the extension of the current moratorium law for commercial and large development, site plan development. And we ended up passing a nine-month moratorium. That moratorium will expire May 1st, begin August 1st. And we're very, very hopeful that that will give us enough time for both the Senate Commission and the Town Board to finish our work on this project.
So it will expire at the end of April?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that's all I have to report.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Tim? Hearing none. That's great. Thank you very much, Tim. Um, I wanted to take a little time to talk about topics that were brought up at the June public information meetings, and I also want to welcome Cal. Hello, hello, Councilman Cal. And so I made a list of some of the things that I heard, and I thought others could join in, and I'll just go through them. Things that I thought we're thinking about as we're going through this. Um, the cost of zoning came up, which is really not part of the zoning law, but I just wanted to bring that to people's attention. There were a lot of, there were some questions about the water overlay district, and I, there are a couple of people I'm getting back to, I have gotten back to to make sure that they have a chance to talk with like Rick Letterer Barnes, who does the mapping, and try to understand it further if there's a question. The Hector, the Hector was noted, and I just wanted to bring a couple of people I know on the commission have looked at, went to the town of Hector land use to see what was going on. And indeed, Hector pointed his zoning commission, which has now completed its work and turned in a report that was about 130 pages. Um, at the meeting, someone had said that the report, that the zoning law is about 30. However, there is no zoning law yet. There is a reference in some in minutes of a recent town board meeting. Haven't had a public hearing yet, and they haven't put anything, the 130-page thing is on their website, but that's all. So they, they said something that they have reduced it in size. They have reduced it. From what I can tell, they, they have never had a site plan law in that town. The town is somewhat different, a lot different from here. It's got a lot of lake frontage, and it has a village, and the village is, you know, the village is not part of the town in terms of government, which has its own government. And then it has kind of a commercial district that runs along the main road that goes through that, and that's through the town, and then it has, everything else is really agoral. So it's substantially different, but the only, they had very few laws on their books or on their town website. They had things like, I think they had a dog law, and they had, I think there were only four laws listed. So I will keep looking, and I did send a message off to their town supervisor saying, you know, let us know when that's posted. We, you know, might want to look at it. So that's, just wanted to bring people up to date on that.
Genius, a clarification, because I thought I was understanding from emails that weren't out that the 130-page draft, the difference from that and the short draft was that indeed, they, they did not have site plan in the short draft, and I'm assuming therefore it was in the long draft. Is that a misunderstanding on my part?
Well, that's what I think. I mean, I think that's exactly, could be what has happened, because they don't have, they don't have a law at all about site plan. And I'm assuming that, and there is one in the 130-page draft. So I'm kind of assuming that they, maybe what happened is they took the site plan out, which would take out a lot of stuff.
But you haven't seen the 30?
Haven't seen the 30-page stuff, and I sent off and asked, but. Some questions about things like septic systems and why are there, why would you allow lots that were smaller than one acre? And we tried to explain that in the future, things might change. But what we were trying to say is that if you had if the town, if the county health department would allow you to have build a house there, that that was kind of acceptable, as we were trying to explain news tables. One, several people brought up that they were disappointed that Caroline, the hamlet that Caroline was not recognized as a hamlet in our law. And that we don't have, the only definition that people came to me with that we didn't have, and I have to reward someone with a jar of dilly beans for that, is that we don't have hamlet as a definition, and therefore write a definite for hamlets. And I, so I wanted to talk about that. I mean, I guess, and I tried to talk about how hamlets, the hamlets that we looked at had some kind of a public book, and that Caroline doesn't. But we've also had people bring up that maybe that is a space for commercial development, so I just wanted to bring that back up to people's attention. Are there any other things that I did not hear that people wanted to bring to people's attention this evening?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the watershed overlay.
Watershed overlay, okay.
On your answer to Andrew in the email.
Yeah.
The talks about 125-foot buffer from the center lines of perennial streams and edges of the line of water bodies within the Six Mile Creek watershed. Then it says the U.S. National Hydrology gave the data set. U.S. Hydrology data set is different than that because it says 100-foot buffer from center lines of all on the perennial streams.
We decided to make that 125.
I, and Bruce, this is a question for Nanner, but I'm assuming what they're saying is that for the courses of the streams, they're using that data set. And then we've set a buffer distance from that. So how do you know where the center line or the edge is? That's that, that data set that's referenced there. I think that's what's going on.
I think so, too. I'm not sure if everyone's got a question. We had a question today from Andrew Dyser, who asked about how were how, how, what was the data that was used to draw the water overlay? And so I sent him that information that had been on that slide, and then Nan followed up with him saying, yes, that's exactly what was used, and it was used, you know, as a series of overlays on top of each other, which is how this was developed.
Only one other thing on the, on the overlays. I think to the public, it would be much easier for them to understand if we had, like, say, three lines, a line for the riparian buffer, then a line for the next thing, and then a line for what we had as the overlay. Because it would be so much easier for them to understand that we didn't do all this. This stuff's already in play.
Okay.
Just.
Let me get that again. So you're saying, suggesting a line for the riparian buffer, a line for?
Whatever the D E C regulates, and then a line for what we had added into the whole thing for an overlay. Because I think people are misunderstanding some of this, that we added 125 foot.
Ah, okay.
All right, so I'm gonna disagree. Because what D E C regulates is the top of the bank. And only when there's no discernible top of the bank does the D E C regulate out to 50 feet. So, you know, we have to decide that. But the other point is that the water resources overlay isn't just these riparian zones. It's flood zones and it's wetlands. And if it's a D E C wetland, there's a 100-foot buffer, because that's what D E C demands. And if it's a non-D E C rated wetland, then it's a 50-foot buffer, which is what we added on. So you can't, you can draw those lines in, but they'd only be along the riparian areas. So I, you know, it's very specific to that. So I would, I would tend to think that might even confuse things more to have all the extra lines on there. So the water resources overlay is exactly that set of stuff that Jean put out. The regulations of what takes place in there is what we're about to talk about. And then we can decide if we're gonna change the numbers or do something different, so.
I'm gonna talk to Nan tomorrow about tonight's meeting, and I will bring up this conversation and and ask, anyone else want to talk about that?
No, I'll, I'll just chime in that I agree that trying to add additional lines would really get complicated, trying to represent all the different underlying reasoning and requirements in, within the overlay.
Jean, if you are gonna talk to Nan, I have one question I've been using on.
Sure.
So, you know, Rick's mapped these, and people are gonna wonder, you know, where is that on my property, and a map is only so good. Is it possible for Rick to generate files that could be used either on a GPS unit or in Google Maps? Usually these are what they call K M Z or K M L files. But, you know, we're, you know, let's move into the 21st century here. That way, anyone can put this on their phone and walk around and tell where that boundary is on their property. I just don't know if it's feasible, so that's a question for them.
Okay, can you send me that question so I know how to spell K M Z and K M L?
Those are just letters. Yes, absolutely. I will, I will send that in writing.
Because, because I don't know if they're.
K M Z. K M, yeah, I'll send you the question.
You need to spell it, Dick.
You know, sometimes acronyms have vowels and sometimes they don't. It's gonna confuse you, right?
Yeah.
And God knows I confuse well. So, okay, I will, I'll follow up on that and follow up for you. Maybe we need to have a a written description that for people who are not map savvy can read and also understand how the water, how it was developed. So I'm gonna talk about that, because some people understand things by words, and some people understand things by pictures. Okay, so I'm gonna write down that down word. Okay, anyone else? As I know that, for instance, Bill and Michelle spent a lot of time outside talking with people. And were there questions that came up?
Um, there's two I'm gonna bring up, but Michelle, did you have some things that stuck in your mind?
I guess the only thing that stuck in my mind is really the water. I thought the water resources overlay was the prime question. And being able to subdivide your property, if, you know, if you have a lot when zoning goes into play, that the idea about how many times can you subdivide it and not have to deal with the minimum lot size?
Yes, and that was a question that I think, I don't think that Ernie and I did a good job of explaining, and that we are gonna need to explain better. And I, unfortunately, the man who I was talking to never got back to me and gave me his name, so I don't know who it was. He's tall, white-haired.
Oh, that was Ken. That was Ken.
No.
No. Ken Hartraves. At the end of the meeting.
Yeah, is he, is he related to Chris Powell? That's a way of getting related. Yes, he, he mentioned that he was, that, okay.
I can start. I can just.
That would be very useful, because I, he asked a question and then said he would email me or get back to me, and he never had. So, so there you are.
All right, so there were two other things about the water resources overlay that we talked a lot about out outside. And one, and this is again, I wish I maybe asked people to sign a list or something, because I want to get back to this guy. But, but someone was adamant that, that there was an error in, in the map on their property, that it was bone dry where, where the water resources overlay was. I tried explaining, went in there, he pointed to the spot, and it was kind of a long, I think, 600. And so I said, well, there's a stream, and he said, no, 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 that's a re, and, and, you know, I may be misremembering what he was pointing to. But when I got home, I looked at the map carefully, and it's Six Mile Creek. So, you know, there's a riparian buffer around Six Mile Creek for a reason. But he was saying, oh, no, our field is really dry, whatever. So I, again, I wish I had him to like, and I did tell him, look, if you really think there's an error in the map, please contact us. We'll go out and field check whatever. But he's convinced that the map is garbage, because in his mind, there's a mistake in his property, therefore, the whole map is not worth anything. And it's that extension from what I think is actually an error on his part, but, but even if there is one mistake in the map, he's generalizing to the whole thing. So I just wish we could like meet and see a map together and go over that. The other thing that came up was the point of buildable acreage. And in particular, why remove things in the water resources overlay from your calculation of allowed dwellings, even if you had to stay out of that area, that felt unfair. And I think I wrote a note, an email note about that. And so, you know, that's come up at least a couple of times, and I think it's a point worth the zoning commission revisiting, but I would like it to be at a time when Nan was present to help, you know, flesh out what would be the rationale and reasons why it's a good idea to, to, you know, using that buildable acreage. But I think it does feel unfair to folks, and so I'd like us to revisit that question.
Okay, yes, I will put that on my list. Um, anyone else? Ernie?
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple of things. I thought it was interesting that there was a a motion made to suggest that the entire 79 corridor should be a commercial zone, which was roundly applauded by the majority of the people in the room, which I don't think should go totally unnoticed. I had had some discussions after the meeting with Bruno Schickel and someone else, and we were talking about multiple-family housing being subject to special use permit, and kind of the point being that once something becomes subject to review by a committee for an approval, the abuse of power can happen. Not that it will, but you know, that was the point. And so it was felt that not allowing multiple-family housing by, by right, maybe with special, with a site plan review or what have you, would be less discriminatory. And, and the other point that was brought up by, it just resounded with me was the point that was brought up by the guy that owns the, the weddings place. I forget his name.
John Morris.
Yeah, we basically said, you know, you guys are making, you know, all these decisions based on your comprehensive plan, and you know, basically, I didn't see anywhere on the comprehensive plan where, you know, where, where the question, where the questionnaires that were, which generated the comprehensive plan, there was no mention of zoning on any of these questionnaires, and that he felt that the whole questionnaire process was kind of self-serving for a particular set of answers, and did not necessarily reflect the, the true feelings of the majority of the townspeople. And I guess I would, you know, I would say that, that, you know, I saw this, I, and I don't believe I was in the town when that questionnaire went around, but in looking at it in, over over the course of these various meetings, I have, you know, I shared that kind of feeling that, you know, that was not a very good survey. I mean, you know, basically, you know, kind of, and, you know, just the questions were just dumb. I'm sorry to say that just, you know. Do you like water? Do you like clean air? Yes, 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 yes. You know, do you like open space? Yes, you know, so it just, it, you know, whenever was the question, would you be willing to give up some of your rights so that, you know, your rights to develop property so that the open space could be preserved for all? You know, it just didn't come down to that. So anyway, that's just a little bit of a event, but those were things that, that, that I remember from those meetings.
I'm gonna push back pretty hard on the survey question, which I actually felt was dumb and poorly worded. I mean, I wasn't on the planning board at the time. I was kept waiting for part two of the survey to come out. I thought part one was sort of these general things, and then based on that, they were gonna give us part two that focused in more. I mean, I felt it was really in many ways, either vague or biased towards not the values. I mean, you'd say, you know, do you like X, but it, you know, is X important? But it could be important to get rid of or important to have. They never really followed up on that. But what I'm gonna really push back on is the thought that the comprehensive plan is based on the survey. That's crap. The survey was one input to the comprehensive plan. We also had several workshops in the community over a span of a year. We had a bunch of meetings with privilege of the floor over a span of a couple of years. We had a public hearing on the comprehensive plan, and then the Town Board had a public hearing on the comprehensive plan. And at each of those steps, revisions were made. So I get really pissed off, frankly, if people are saying, oh, that wasn't in the survey. Well, big whoop. The survey was one tiny input to the comprehensive plan, and so to say it wasn't in there, invalidates the comp plan. You know, it's a strong man's argument. So I'm gonna, like I say, I'm gonna push that card in that one. Even though I agree, I thought the survey was, you know, I, I talked to the people who did it. I know their rationale for why it was done that way. Again, I kept waiting for point, part two. And town is a very different place the time the first survey came out, right? So, yeah, there's a reason zoning wasn't on the agenda at that time. Times have changed.
I have something to say about that, too. We had cafes, and comprehensive plan, a lot of it was based on the survey. I, I was on that committee when that, when that all went down. And as far as the, the public hearing and the public hearing in a Zoom meeting, there was nobody there from the public. And I don't know who was there as far as a public meeting out in the public. I don't even, there wasn't, to tell you the truth, so.
Not, not a public hearing in public, but the various workshops in public. It was all pre-COVID. But, and I agree with you, Bruce. I mean, that was a weakness that unfortunately COVID hit. And also, I think a big sector of the town wasn't engaged. We did our damnedest, big signs up and everything. You know, they don't get engaged, they don't get engaged. And I, I, so I think there's a weakness in the comp plan because of that. Absolutely.
There was. Yeah, but now they're engaged, you know, and so do we, were them because they weren't engaged before?
No, I'm saying that to have them invalidate the comp plan is not appropriate. I think we should pay attention to them, but remember what fraction of the town were all those angry people in that room the other night? That was what, 70 people? So do you, you know, does the loudest 70 or 100 people dictate what we do? No, we have to do our best to wend our way between all the interests and inputs. I'm just, again, I was just finding the point that the survey was one input. Bruce, it was major for you guys, but we did a bunch of work after that was done, so it's only one of the inputs. So, you know, that's, that's the point I wanted to make.
Well, who was the bunch of work done by? That's what, that's my point.
Oh, I see. Bill Padolca and all the other planning board members at the time, Val was on the planning board, Catherine was on the planning board. Charles Eldemire was on the planning board. And then I, and I can't give you, Bruce, you were at least one of the workshops.
I know.
Cal, Cal was at some of the workshops.
I was at all three of those workshops.
Yeah. And I agree, I wish we had much wider participation, right? But all you can do is, is shout as loud as you can. We're having a meeting. Please come talk to us.
But that's the problem with what goes on. Until the public gets engaged, it starts coming out, because they know what's going down. They don't get involved.
No, that's, like, well, that's very typical, and I'm, I'm agreeing with Ernie and Bruce that, that this is a voice that needs to be paid attention to, because I think it wasn't voiced earlier, because they weren't paying attention or weren't engaged, even though a number of them knew about what was going on. But, you know, but I take it as one input to how we draft the zoning law, not a determinative input.
I'm gonna move us along. Is there anything else that came up at those two meetings that anyone wants to put attention on?
Yeah, I, I think just in the spirit of the conversation we're having, if, if any members of the zoning commission are trying to, you know, quantify the kinds of involvement that we've seen, I, I think it's important to keep. um, you know, quantify the kinds of involvement that we've seen, I I think it's um important to keep in mind that we're hearing from members of uh the Caroline community, residents of the Caroline community, that some of them, and again, I don't have numbers, but some of them are specifically not coming to in-person meetings or leaving in-person meetings early uh because uh of the intimidation and aggressiveness of uh some of the conversations and uh discussion and argumentation uh that's going at the at their at those meetings, and they don't feel safe for a number of reasons. And so if we're gonna put numbers, you know, associated with uh with people attending in-person meetings, um, I think we need to keep that in mind. And we also need to keep in mind that, for example, the Zoom meeting uh that we had uh of the recent information meeting uh series of two. Uh, the Zoom meeting uh was very much uh people asking questions that were uh curious about zoning, um expressing uh appreciation for what's going on. So again, you know, if you want to start putting numbers on things, um, we have, we have to interpret the context in which those numbers are occurring.
Yeah, I I tried to answer that one. Clearly, the majority feels this way, and I kept trying to say I have no notion of what clear majority feels. I know what people who have talked to us have said. People who come to meetings, people who send email, uh, people who stop me on the street or at the Brooklyn Market and talk to me and talk to you. And we share a lot of information and certainly shared all those questions, but I can't put numbers to it. Uh, and that's not my job at all. My job, and I think all of our jobs, is to answer the mandate of the board. So.
Can I just, can I just add? I I want to concur with Barb. I've had a number of people tell me that they are hesitant to express their opinion at in-person meetings because of the intimidation factor. So uh, they they are expecting the town board who they elected to do their jobs, and they don't feel comfortable speaking out. So so Ernie and Bill or Ernie and Bruce, I think, you know, you should address that when you say people aren't being heard. What about the fact that they're intimidating people?
I I don't believe it. I I think it's absolutely ridiculous to say something like that.
Well, you can't tell somebody that their opinion's ridiculous. They have, they have a, they have a serious concern. You don't have the right to tell somebody that their opinion's not valid.
One at a time.
I haven't tried to add any numbers. I don't know why we're even talking about adding. I just said nothing. I'm just saying that what I was saying before was I believe that if people are interested in this, if people believe in this, they should come and talk about it. Everybody does. Everybody has that right. And to say you're intimidated, to me, is just a bit coward.
Well, Bruce, I will tell you that I have been intimidated by having uh my address uh posted on a map um on social media very prominently with the intimation that people should come to my house and do something nasty. And yes, I feel intimidated. I will admit that. So Bruce, that's how I feel, and my feelings are legitimate.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I hadn't I hadn't seen that. I don't have no idea anything about it. But I'm just saying, in a public meeting, people ought to be able to come and and express what they.
Yes, they should be able to. You're right, but they can't.
You're right.
Yeah, some people can. And I, I'll have to say, I was intimidated when I received what I received and what the state police perceived to be a death threat. Uh, intimidating. So and my husband uh right now thinks that I'm completely out of my mind for remaining on this.
I had no awareness of anything else other than that.
Okay.
All right. So to to dial on temperature with two quick points. Bruno's point about the special use permit for the multiple family housing, we did on Zoom as well. I mean, I think we just need to narrowly prescribe what SUP can mean for multiple family housing to prevent abuse. Because the whole point that Nan keeps being into us is that SUP means it's allowed. Right? It's an allowed use. All it means is there might be a few things that that gives you a tool to say maybe not during those hours, or maybe not so loud, or you know, that there are ways you can affect the use.
Wait, wait, is that correct?
Yes.
Site plan review means it's allowed. Special use permit is a special use permit.
Nan has said repeatedly that a special use permit is not used to disallow an activity. It is only used to place conditions on an activity. By definition, that activity is allowed. And I think Bruno's point is, yeah, but they can set the bar so high, it effectively prohibits the activity. And I understand that concern, so we got to put guardrails on so that doesn't happen. That's how I would try to treat that.
I guess I would try, I would try to treat it by making it uh allowed in uh other zones, but with uh size limitations or or something along those lines.
Yeah, so maybe a question to revisit, I think that. And and the last one is the the question about the septic and the one acre lot size and everything. Uh, just just to clarify, because it wasn't clear to me how you guys answered in the meeting. But again, the point is, you can, you know, according to the Tonkens County Health Department, you can have any lot size you want. As long as they're satisfied, you won't pollute water. And if you have an acre or larger, they'll design your your onsite waste treatment system. And if it's under an acre, they won't, and you got to hire someone to do it. So that's the distinction, is that you really can have something smaller, but you're on your own as far as designing the system. That's really the answer to give folks. That's why we set the smaller size.
I believe that. That was the answer that we gave.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Okay. Okay, so um I have um a number of things here that I'm gonna put in the minutes about that we will go back and revisit. And we'll talk to Nan about when I talk about her, I think, tomorrow. And um let us, let us, let me look at the agenda and see what else I'm doing this evening. That would be very useful.
Can I comment on the hamlet?
Yes, you may.
I think it's great. You're gonna make a definition.
Yep.
And um, my understanding of the the way the hamlet destinations came about was the one of the charges to the zoning, the first thing the planners did was to uh examine existing conditions in the town.
Right.
And then step establish what they thought were reasonable places for whatever hamlets and things. So um, it wasn't a disrespect of historical hamlets or anything like that.
Right. And I, you know, if that's something that, as we go back to discuss this, if people think that we should include that as a hamlet, because I think people are feeling like their history is being um denied. Um, it could say a rural area and um, and and the hamlet of Perron. For instance, you could do that. There are a number of things you could do. So I that's one of the things on my list. Um, some reason.
Guess when we come up with a definition of the hamlet, then we can really decide that.
Yeah, I actually, I think I have a definition, and I will send that out to people. I I spent some time looking at various things and I wrote one, so.
Right. And I want to raise one more point, you know, with Ernie talked about with like more development on Route seventy-nine, you know, I and I think I sent a note about this also. Yeah, I am wondering slash concerned if we're allowing uh adequate space for future commercial development or future dense, you know, um residential development. Because most of the hamlets don't have large parcels left, and if you're gonna build a bunch of units, you need a large parcel. So I I it might be worth looking at the map again to see uh you know, if there are other areas to either include in a hamlet or include as a, you know, expand that commercial. I don't really know how to do it equitably, but it's it's a worth, to me, a worthwhile question to explore, that we aren't too much cementing ourselves to what is, as opposed to, you know, where we want to go.
Right. Yeah. Okay, uh, so let me look at, I think we have okay, so continue work on development standards, Article four in the first cap in the first graph, which is now Article five, and if possible, move on to supplementary standards. And I also had, for some reason, I had put in report from freight motor truck and the review board, but we talked about that last time, so that does not need to be in tonight's agenda. So let let us move on to Article four, uh, or Article, the new Article five, and um I can put that up if, um, I could share it.
Yeah, you should. I think it'll be muted during. Oh, wait.
I'm not in. So does anyone else want to share theirs? I didn't go into the middle. I'm just here. So I really can't hear. I'm really, I'm actually here. So somebody want to share that if you want to look at it that way?
Um, I could do that. I'll be here for the whole meeting, so it'd be better if someone else did.
Okay. Tell someone, I could go into the meeting. Anyone?
I could find it on my computer. I don't know how well I'm gonna.
Anyone have it up?
Negotiate this. Hold on a minute.
I'll just come into the meeting. I could do that. We'll see you get there first.
Okay, I've got it up. Uh, I'm not sure about how to share my screen now.
At the bottom, there's a green, um, there's a green box with an arrow on it that says share screen. On your Zoom.
Yeah, I have to get back to my Zoom.
It'll show you, it'll show you all, once you click the green shares screen, it'll show you all the documents that are open until you click the one you want.
Okay, allow. It's asking me to open my system preferences.
All right, Jean.
Right now.
Um, if you guys wait a minute, I can do it, I think. Just hold on a minute.
All right, while we, I have one question. Um, in the part that Nan listed as what we did last time, she struck struck a paragraph about linkages. And I don't remember discussing that one way or the other, but it's just my faulty memory, probably. So dude, we we decided to strike that paragraph. When it comes up, we'll see. It's right before what we're about to do.
Okay. I could.
Oh, that's minutes.
Yep.
That's the wrong document, looks like.
It is, but I should be able to get there. Here it is. Okay, and now I'm just getting ready. I'm getting there. I swear to God, I'm getting there. Okay, I think we are just about there.
Okay, so. I didn't see, so.
Article five, development standards. So, um.
If you scroll down, you'll get to where she says we got to hear. Okay, huh, I'm not seeing the section I was questioning. Oh, well.
Here it is. So you didn't see what we did before that or?
Yeah, I thought it was right before it. It wasn't something we done. Oh, well. I'll find it.
You can always come back.
I I are you showing, you're probably not showing the full review. It's something she struck, and so it may not, it may not be appearing if you're not showing the entire, like, all revisions. Under review, what what are you set as?
I am set as the
At the top bar, click review. And show, show all markup.
Yeah, there you go. Do over.
And show all markup.
Not simple markup, but all markup. Up above. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go. Which I admit, we might want simple markup eventually, but.
Can you make that a little bigger, Jane?
Uh, let me see. I should be able to. You. How's that?
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so.
It's only to scroll down again, because all that extra stuff in there has pushed us somewhere else in the document, I think.
Okay.
There we go. That yellow, the yellow box, the stuff in yellow. Did we discuss that?
Linkages. Yes, I think we discussed that that the mention, the sheer mention of trails made people very uncomfortable. And um.
Okay. I just didn't remember it. It's fine.
Yeah, I think we did.
If anyone else agrees.
So let's go on to B, hamlet, and then it talks about um, users shall be allowed pursuant to table one, Article one, all commercial buildings. The review board may require sidewalks to be installed when there can be a connection to existing adjacent sidewalks, or when the review board's opinion provision aside of a sidewalk.
So I have a question on the sidewalks. Um, does that apply to residential properties?
Absolutely.
I I think it does as well. Uh, just wanted to make sure, and I'll make sure that we're happy with that. And I think that that's most appropriate in a hamlet. And the next question I have is, who pays for the sidewalk?
I think that we should ask that question, and what do we think?
Well, the developer would be responsible for building the initial sidewalks. But having lived in the Tall Creek area where we were finally assessed a sidewalk repair fee, you kind of wonder how that works going down the road. But I believe that the sidewalks are generally the responsibility of the owner. But it depends, I suppose, whether they're within the the right of way or or what.
Are there any sidewalks currently occurring in the town of Caroline? And if so, how are they taken care of?
There are definitely some in Brooktondale, Sable Springs. Mark, how they?
There, there are no signs. There are no sidewalks that the town worries about or takes care of or remains.
So currently owners.
The owners, yeah.
So I mean, there are stretches in Brooktondale where the sidewalk is interrupted. And both the original comp plan and the new comp plan suggested that they be finished in order, you know, completed so that people could use them more more readily. But I don't see how, I mean, so this clause would tend to apply if someone's like building a new house, I take it, on a residential property in Brooktondale. Or Sable Springs or Caroline Center.
Right. And are people okay with that?
Well, yeah, it gets into all kinds of things, like, you know, are we gonna have a snow shoveling law? You know, is uh you know, who, and then, yeah, very much, you know, who whose responsibility for maintaining them? Not only just when they, you know, fall apart, but, you know, keeping tree trubs trimmed back and, you know, snow shoveled and the set and the other thing. You know, might be uh might be a little bit too much for uh the their little town at this point to get into that.
But 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 given that sidewalks already exist and Caroline has not passed a law or needed to pass a law, uh, that requires bushes be trimmed or sidewalks be shoveled. I'm not sure, Ernie, that that's, um, you know, just to, you know, again, we're kind of positing a straw man. This says the review board may require sidewalks to be installed. Um, so I would think that the review board would look and see if there are um existing adjacent sidewalks, or if there's, you know, a large um uh segment of new housing. segment of new housing that's going to be built, would it make sense to have a sidewalk? So I'm comfortable with the language as it is.
I'm not comfortable with it because, you know, in the review board's opinion, provisions of the sidewalk would enhance pedestrian opportunities. Say I build a new house, and that's pretty arbitrary as to the opinion of the review board. Also, once you tell me that I have to build a sidewalk in my house, then that means I'm liable if somebody gets hurt on that sidewalk. Which, to me, opens up a big can of worms. And there again, then you can say, okay, I want to build a slight sidewalk, and you say, no, I have to build it out of cement, or this or that. It, it opens a tremendous, if it was through the hamlet, whether there are existing sidewalks, and I say, okay, the review board says we, you should match what's there, or whatever, because it extends pedestrian, but if it's, if it's not, it just seems to me like it's huge undertaking, huge challenge.
So what about language? It said something like, if the sidewalk would extend or connect existing sidewalks, the review board may require that sidewalk be built, and the construction should match what's there.
Which is sort of what that says, when there can be a connection to existing adjacent sidewalks.
Does it? Okay, that's good. I have to be ambivalent about this one, because I can see it triggering concern in the community. And I'm a little worried about imposing a cost burden on a residential property. And I see the benefit of sidewalks, and that's the whole point. We're trying to make the hamlets walkable. So I'm, I'm ambivalent.
It's not to say that a developer wouldn't put in sidewalks if it made sense. You know, I mean.
Um.
Let's, let's look at people's better nature instead of always assuming that, you know, they're gonna, you know, cut out any frills that they possibly can to maximize their profits.
Well, again, this is not necessarily a developer. It, you know, it could be me, right? Building a new lot in Brooktondale.
Right.
Right.
That's who I'm more concerned about.
Uh, if, I'm gonna just do a straw poll here. Tell me if you want to include this, section four, say a, yay?
Yay, yeah, yay, I think.
Leave it out?
You're gonna change the wording?
No, right now, I'm leaving it as, as it is.
Nay.
Nay, anyone else?
I'm a nay.
Michelle? Michelle?
I think we lost Michelle.
That three seconds feels amazing.
Not hearing an i.
Uh, I am willing to vote nay on this, and, but what I'm going to suggest is that we leave this and come back to this as we come to the back, the end of the line. See what else has come up. So I'm gonna just leave this in yellow and say we think we're gonna take it out.
Yeah, and, and I'm happy having it applied to commercial buildings in particular, but, you know.
Okay, the five, the review board should evaluate traffic generation volumes. And uses required recycling review, and then the Hamlet District, where proposed non-traffic violence, traffic volume, state traffic calming methods shall be included in the design for all non-residential uses and major subdivision when new roads are proposed. So this is things like, would you need a different speed limit? Would you need a speed bump? Would you need a, right, exactly? I'm assuming that that's the kind of thing that review boards do during site plan review. Anyone problems with that?
It's fine.
And, and I will, again, I have questions on certain specific sections. I don't know what other folks, if they'd rather, we, I mean, in some sense, we're very thorough. If we read each one.
Yeah, if you have questions, let's move ahead unless you, if you have a question on an area. I'm fine with seven. I'm, eight has a couple of questions if you're. Um. So the planning board, so I think it's in this eight one, what Nan has said over here on the side, and I'm having a hard time reading it. If I can move the box, I might be able to read it, yeah.
She basically just said that, that basically that was based on what hydrologists recommend when there are questions about capacity.
Okay.
And I'm good with that being based on some experts' opinion. I do, small detail, neighbor's wells needs a apostrophe after the s. And the last sentence is not. It just stops.
The purposes for these tests are to determine, God only knows what, yes. So I'm gonna put a thing in here, and we're gonna try to figure that out. I'm going to mark that in yellow. Adequacy of water supply, is that what people think that is?
That's my guess.
Well, it's also, there's a sewage disposal thing, so.
Nan, and I'm putting yellow up here so that I know what I'm doing.
And I want to report here something that Michelle and I heard when we were outside the fire hall, and I'd be curious sometime to, to talk to the review board about what the review process was for, particularly phase two of the Boiseville development, because there were two different neighbors that told us that after phase two, they now have sulfur in their water. Of course, correlation is not causation, but it was curious that they had not had that prior and now do. And they were upset about that. So I'm wondering what kind of testing was done, and it may mean we need better testing, or maybe it's some other cause, I don't know.
Okay. Testing and sulfur water. You remember that?
Yes, I don't remember the, remember that I'm advocating for a more rigorous test.
Okay.
But I don't remember what.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm making a note about eight, about what kind of testing, so we can add something to that. Um. So that's adequacy of control measures to prevent groundwater or surface water contamination. And I actually don't know sulfur would be included in that. That's the only thing.
Yeah, I mean, the only time I've seen testing done, it was, it only measured drawdown.
Right.
They basically are looking for, for, you know, just what happens to the water table when you start sucking on it.
Yeah.
I don't know that they have ways to, I mean, you know, sulfur contamination would be drawing from another part of the aquifer. It could take years for that to happen. It would be interesting to know, if this is going to become a requirement, it would be interesting to know what tests can be done and what are commonly done. And, and, you know, and whether our thresholds really make some sense here.
I, I second what Ernie just said.
Okay. Um, going on to nine, Hamlet District siting and lot layout guidelines, and Nan notes that this is labeled as a guideline. And which are encouraged, rather than required. The adaptive use of existing structures. New buildings adjacent to existing structures, and that's, I'm clear that that's in there, because that was an issue that came up at the public information, the public one, not on Zoom, where someone was convinced that lived in Feedsville, that he would never be able to build a kind of a house that he built before, which was a house built in a, you know, that used to be a barn, and also that he couldn't keep any farm animals. And that's not anywhere in the law, but he was absolutely convinced of that. So I think it's important that we have things like this in here that say that this kind of reuse is encouraged.
Um, Gene, could, could we just dwell a minute? Could you scroll back up to, to, to where the number nine is, where it says guidelines? Just to dwell on that for a minute, as we consider the language throughout here, to emphasize, this is labeled guidelines. Guidelines are encouraged, standards are required. So nine A clearly says the adaptive reuse is encouraged. Nine B says should be, and a lot of the language throughout this says should be. So I would suggest that we make it clear throughout this item nine, that all of its subsections are, you know, encouraged, rather than should be, because should be is prescriptive. More like a standard would be stated.
I, I, I thought that Nan was using should rather than shall to give the guideline rather than the requirement, but that's maybe a lawyer.
Yeah, I, I, I think for a member of the public reading through this, this should be, becomes prescriptive.
Okay, and that's fine. And so we have neat ways like Nan, that Gene just did, to make it, are encouraged to be great. I'm, I'm totally cool with that.
Okay, so let's look at that as we go through this.
And, and Ernie, as someone who's, you know, raised concerns about aesthetic zoning, that I was not as concerned about, but have become more concerned about, based on your comments and other folks in the community I've talked to, I'm okay with this because it is indeed guidelines. How do you feel about it?
I, I think that if they're guidelines, that's fine, but, you know, I guess, I guess in the, in the interest of, of brevity, you know, why are we throwing a bunch of guidelines into our documents? Yeah, which is, you know, aren't enforceable, you know, you know, kind of presume that, that without these guidelines, people are going to be doing, you know, wild and crazy things or something. I just, I just, you know, I guess my, my.
Okay. Um, Tim, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to contextualize this a little bit, in that these, this section of the site plan law was written by the subcommittee of the task force. And the logic for these standards, and this debate between, between standards and/or, sorry, I just forgot the language, something looser, happened in the context of a consideration by the task force that it did not appear that there was support for, or legal standing for, let's say, commercial business restrictions, a formula business restrictions, and that adjacent towns had addressed this by having some aesthetic standards that would require formula businesses, if they moved into town, to build in accordance with, with certain town standards of existing commercial structures. And what the task force did to research this is literally went throughout the town and took photographs of all of the external commercial structures, and there did end up being certain common features, such as corticoes, slanted roofs, porches, et cetera, et cetera, that they thought would be helpful for a, let's call it a formula business to adopt. So I just wanted to, to provide that, that context.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, thanks, Jim, for, for that background. The, with the original site plan law was set up, there were some design standards, not standards, there were designed, again, recommendations, there were a separate document adopted by resolution by the town board. Part of that was for flexibility in re-adopting them, because if you changed this language in here, you'd have to have a public hearing. So for a while, that was felt, that was good. But then it was felt that the site plan law didn't have enough teeth, which is what led to the task force, and so there was an adoption, a move towards making these requirements rather than shalls and encourages. I think we've made a reasonable separation here. One solution could indeed be, if, if we feel this is making this document too bulky, would be to remove this and put it into a, a different document that was our design recommendations. I'm a little leery of that. I think it's nice having it all in one document, but it does give flexibility. So I'm just tossing it out there for anybody else. Life's that idea.
Anyone else think that's a good idea? Of course, you don't have to make that decision right now, but.
Um, just, just, just a comment related to this conversation, that just a reminder that the guidelines language only applies to number nine that we're dealing with here. The entire section that is coming, section newly numbered 5.3 is specific standards for the water resources overlay, and then that's followed by a whole article, which is now article six, on supplementary standards, which is general standards for non-residential and business building design, and includes standards for commercial uses. So just to be clear, that the guidelines that we're talking about here is a very, very short section, and that the standards are, there's more of them coming that clearly apply to commercial and business uses.
I think even in that new section six, some of those are guidelines, but I only got partway through it.
Okay. So in this section nine, the ABCs, I can come through here and add encouraged and make those those words say that.
Sounds good.
And I will do that. Ha, don't do that. No, I'll go back this way.
So my internet went out during my tirade there, so I don't know what I've missed, but.
I don't think we heard it.
Yeah, basically.
Just as.
No, no, we heard the first three quarters.
You basically said that I'm gonna go through this section nine here, where it goes down to G, and try to get rid of shalls and shoulds, and make it be more encouraging, because these are guidelines, and I will do that. And I think that should make these all fine. And then there's commercial, and some things have been removed in here. So let's go on to commercial, which is section 5.3, specific standards, and these are standards in here.
And I just catch up quickly. So Barb pointed out that this is a relatively short section, that there's more standards coming, and in the next section, there really are standards. And I did float the idea of maybe removing this language into a separate document to meet your objection of why have it in there, but no takers, so.
Can we, can we title it a little bit differently so that it's clear that they are, I, I, you know, I'm just.
I'm gonna say guidelines or recommendations, recommendations better?
I would keep it like that, but you could have a sentence under it saying, you know, the.
These are not requirements, these are guidelines.
The, the following are recommended but not required.
Yes, yes.
Or encouraged but not required, or something. Maybe recommended, I don't know.
Recommended.
Okay, I will do that, and I will do this all when I get home tonight, all of the sections, and read it.
So, so just a quick question, are we ever gonna get back to a, a, a meant that we can comment on with writing? Are we able to do that with this current document? I really haven't, haven't tried.
I'm not, I didn't hear the word that you said.
I, I think what he's asking is this one, is this going to be turned into a Google Doc so we can all comment on it like we did on the December 28th version?
I can do that.
Yeah, and if so, I mean, the problem is that the section with figures, and it gets all messed up, and the tables get all messed up when you do that. So maybe we should just take from, you know, article five on down and make that a Google Doc. I, I'm not sure, then he's only a partial document, I admit, but.
I can make article five on into a Google document. I will do that.
Yeah, and then, you know, just make it a universal document, and that's where all of our comments and everything can all be stored in one place.
Okay.
You know.
I can do that easily either tonight or tomorrow morning. So I will do that. So, um, we're gonna talk for another half an hour or so about section five and kind of continue this. and kind of continue this, and I will do that tomorrow morning. But if there's anything here that you see right now that you want to have changed, let's do that. So this is about, the overlay district essentially. And, uh, Nan reorganized a bunch of this to try to make it easier, and I think she did a good job of that. And we should got rid of a bunch of it as well.
Yeah, this, this is where the rubber really hits the road in terms of some of the sort of newer, I think, restrictions for the town. So it's, it's good to look at this carefully. Um, and there's still a little bit of like nesting level and whether it's a letter or a number that this be going through carefully one time, but it's much better than it was before. Uh, my first comment is in 5.3 sub point four, but that's just me. If anyone wants to talk, talk about something sooner, we should do it.
Okay. So when I put this up as a Google Doc, do you want all of these changes in there, or do you want it as it is existing now?
I would accept the changes. What, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I, 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 I would as well, because Nan was clear in saying that she left all of the policy questions uh, in here. Um, so they'll be, you know, that will be evident. But, um, you know, the edits that people were suggesting, you know, we've already done that, uh, on the earlier versions, and this incorporates it.
Yeah, I actually had to, Jean, I have to scroll up a little bit. I'm sorry, I, I missed something, I think. Keep going up to where she makes her definitions. Okay, so, so this is key, because it was a really confusing, when setback was used, it said, oh, so Nan suggesting, a riparian buffer and a riparian buffer setback area. Then she starts using words like riparian buffer area. Is, I think, we as a committee need to describe, decide what the language, what the word should be, and then just make sure it's used consistently. And while it's long, I would need recommend riparian buffer area and riparian buffer setback area as the inner and outer areas, but maybe someone has a much better idea in the language.
So let me try to read this as it now says, protection shall be provided by a setback made up of a riparian buffer and in some cases, an additional riparian buffer setback area. The setback protects overall water quality by limiting development in accordance with the adjacent land's ability to filter sediment, nutrients, and other pollutants. Streams within the town of Caroline Water Resources and Flooding Overlay District shall have streams setbacks and rip- and riparian buffers as follows.
Okay, so elsewhere she uses language like riparian buffer and buffer setback area, and that's also okay. We just have to make sure we have a different name that's clear for the two different parts.
That they're defined.
So, so the, the, the sentence here, just the flooding overlay district shall have stream setback and riparian buffers as follows, should say, shall have riparian buffers and riparian buffer setbacks as follows. Is that what you're getting at, Bill?
Yeah, or whether it's setback area is, is part of the question, because I, you know, yes, we just need to make sure, make it clear, there is a section outside, the riparian buffer is the 50 feet closest to the stream. And then the riparian buffer setback, or the buffer setback, or the riparian buffer setback area, whatever you want to call it, is the next 50 feet.
How about, how about riparian buffer and then buffer setback?
Yeah.
Like that, riparian buffer and buffer setback area.
Different lines may help that.
Yeah, maybe. The issue was, and maybe it's fine, is that the word setback was sometimes used, not capitalized. And then it wasn't clear if it applied to both of them together.
All right.
Or just to the one.
So maybe setback isn't the right word. Maybe it's, uh, additional protection zone or something.
Okay, I'm making a note about this. Okay, so when I, I'm going to put this into a Google Doc and then I'm going to mark some places in yellow that we have questions about and ask other people to go in and mark things with yellow that are confusing. How's that? Okay, so we got rid of a lot of vegetative blah, blah, blah. And we'll figure out repair. I, I need to go and look at, do we have these, are these defined in the definitions? And, um, make sure that they're in the definitions.
Right, can you scroll up one last time to 5.3 sub point? Uh, yes, so it talks about, two talks about, um, we have a site plan review, three talks about wetlands, four just launches into protection shall be via. And I think it ends with streams with, within town Caroline shall have stream setbacks. I think that sentence needs to be first. We need to make it clear that sub point four is talking about streams. That was my, my initial point. Yeah. To me, that, that, now it's clear we're talking about streams and why there's buffers, et cetera, repairing buffers at least.
And I would get rid of that.
So where do you put that sentence?
I put it at the beginning in number four.
Okay.
Okay. So let's see if that works. I'm not going to, none of this is in, in storm yet. It's in mud at the moment, but.
That's not in a buffer.
Let's, and let me go back to riparian buffer areas in the, watch for integrity, repair, she's made these riparian buffer areas. Bill is suggesting an illustration in this area, looks like. This be one.
Oh, I was so clever when I was younger.
Well, I have to say, this entire process, I mean, it aged all of us.
Yeah, I mean, this sort of gets at what Bruce was talking about, that it's sort of, it might help illustrate the concept.
Yeah. Okay. I will try to make sure that we are using right words and, and consistently throughout this section. No one seems to have commented on these, and then within the buffer, and we have to, this would probably have to be within the riparian buffer.
So, so just to point out again, what this is saying is in that 50 feet closest to the top of the stream bank, very little activity can take place unless the building's already there. Um, and in the next 50 feet out, you can put a, a park bench or a little patio if it doesn't exceed a certain size. Um, and we currently have no restrictions on the riparian buffer areas in the town of Caroline. And these are based on recommendations that I believe start with Tompkins County. I've been meaning to track down why they use, use those numbers, um, haven't had a chance to do it yet. But our, I pointed to zoning commission, are you comfortable with adding these restrictions?
I am.
Yes, I, I am, given the purpose of the water resource overlay.
Yeah.
Okay, and I will be too, once I talk to, uh, Katie or somebody at the Tompkins County Planning.
I don't know, but who is the person who knows most about this at?
Oh, yeah, Darby, Darby's a great idea. I mean, I'll, I'll call their general number and they'll give me somebody, unless somebody else has a contact there.
I'll, I'll send you her, her number.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, the same things apply to C, just make sure that we are consistent with buffer and buffer area and riparian area throughout this. So I will read this carefully and make sure that it makes sense to me and also to D. Um, I see that D mentions mining, um. At one meeting, somebody did bring up mining and was concerned that we were distinguishing, that we were not allowing for large enough mining in terms of what farms need. Um, and I just wanted to say that as we're going along here. So like, uh, if you ran a farm and you were consistently taking some gravel out of your stream to do something with, um, that perhaps our kind of very small mining was not sufficient. But the person did not give us any numbers, so I don't have a sense of what this person would think was sufficient.
I, I believe that was Andrew Diger, who was raising that issue.
Ah, okay, thank you.
And I think that was in relation to, I think there was a planning board, or it's zoning commission discussion that maybe Bill brought up. You don't want to remind me though, about?
But what, 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 what we stuck, we kept the larger number, which was, um, I no longer remember the number, but, uh, you saw me by that big pile of gravel. But, yeah, I, and I don't know, I think it's worth getting feedback from farmers, but, you know, uh, it depends what stream he's taking it from. If, if it is, uh, regulated by the DEC, he cannot be taking gravel from it, uh, listen, unless it gets approved from them.
Yeah, and I don't know if he was speaking for himself or if he was speaking for someone else. I don't have any sense of that.
Yeah.
He's, he lives along Central Chapel.
Uh, anyway, yeah, if, if he gives a number, that's great, you know.
Great, I just didn't get a number. Okay, so these are things that are prohibited in the riparian buffer area and the buffer setback, including this mining or removal of soil. And, um, and then we go on to five.
Can, can we back up just a second?
Sure.
Uh, just to that last, yeah, it says, uh, so for B, drain fields, raise systems and replacement of existing wells. So drain fields, I'm assuming this is referring to septic system drain fields?
I think so, because we don't, we, basically it says elsewhere, this does not apply to ag operations.
Yeah, so septic system drain fields, raise system. So septic system drain fields would include raised systems, so I'd get rid of raised system. And then, I don't know why replacement of existing wells has to adhere to a hundred foot buffer.
I don't either.
So I, I think, good question, I think we need to get info from, again, this is almost certainly taken from what the recommendations were. I think it's, they're trying to avoid disturbance, but of course a well disturbed a lot less area than some other uses.
Right, I'm going to put a question in here and ask. You will ask, okay. Mining or removal of soils and gravel, quarrying of soil materials.
Okay, so now we're getting into the, uh, you know.
So, so.
Go ahead, Bill.
So number six, I, I just have possibly delete. I mean, we, we have to decide whether we're using buildable, net buildable acreage or not. So it's just, I don't know when we're going to make that discussion, but, that section is only relevant if we're using net buildable acreage, o- otherwise all of six comes out.
Right, okay, I will, uh, make a comment in here, discussion.
So like on that change you made to, to, to rename it, the, the septic system drain fields, it means that can be cleared in Nan that you made that change?
I'm going to, I put a thing here that says.
Uh, no, that's after the well things. I think you might want to highlight septic system drain fields.
Ah, okay.
To draw her attention to that, or otherwise.
Okay.
Make sure.
Go.
Okay. Um. Okay, so let's look at, this is very complicated here.
The, when you go back to the mining and removal of soil.
Yep.
Sand and gravel quarrying, or all tiers, and less connection with the farm operation. Is there any, did we set any limit on that, or you just can't do it?
Um, I, what Bill had just said was that in most of those areas, they're prohibited. In a riparian area, they're prohibited by the DEC.
No, I says DEC controls the bank and the bed. And so, but not all streams are regulated by DEC. This is different. This is saying in the riparian zone, which we're putting around intermittent streams as well as perennial streams, you cannot mine or remove soil, sand, or gravel, um, at all. So this is very different. Doesn't apply to farm operations, but it does apply to everybody else.
Right.
Again, we can flag that as, is this really justified? It's a reasonable question, Bruce. We, we should, I think we should get some answers as to why, you know, what science is this based on. But I'm assuming the idea is if you're mining and you've like torn a bunch of the surface off, and then there's a big storm, right, you got erosion into the stream. The whole point is to try to protect water quality. So the whole basis of this is to not disturb land near a stream.
Right. So I'm almost wondering.
Okay.
On left farm operations, I'm almost thinking farm operations shouldn't either.
I think farm operations we don't control, right?
If it's in an ag district, the New York State will supersede us on that.
Right. Okay, so I added that comment, and I'm coming down here now to seven. That says each application for building permit, blah, 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 blah. Shall furnish sufficient data to demonstrate that these will not result in the following, in the buffer or setback areas, which you should probably rename, just so that they're always consistent, because that's how we are. Um, so this is, um. I guess the question are, are we happy with these uses?
Uh, I have a question, the set, last sentence, says further applicants for new construction projects disturbing one or more shall employ site-specific, one or more what?
Um.
Where are you?
Uh, last sentence in that first paragraph, before you get to the sub points A, B, et cetera.
I would assume it's one or more of the, um, issues below, is it issues, or is it?
Acres, acres, I think.
Acres?
Acres.
Acres?
Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's where it, that kicks in. Yeah, the stormwater management stuff kicks in for an acre of disturbance.
Okay, and I think you're right, that, that's a grandfathered error from the original draft that you caught before, Ernie. That sounds right.
I'm just going to, we'll ask, just make sure that that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, we do have a stormwater law. We do not, we do, yes, yes.
We do.
Yeah, 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 so.
I'm pretty sure it triggers at a half paper.
I think we should make sure we know that, so let's see. First, I'm going to write stormwater law. Two thousand seven, what's the trigger? Okay.
And I'm going to ask you to back up, because I missed a big point in the first couple of things in this section, we're talking about flood zones. I assume that must be where it is.
Give me a number.
Yeah, I, I don't know where it is. And maybe it's not here. Okay, somewhere in the earlier draft, it's not, okay. So there's the reference to the flood damage prevention law. But I am missing, not seeing where in the overlay, I believe Nan had proposed no building in the hundred foot, hundred year flood plain. And I'm not seeing it here.
Number six, let's go down and look. This is about net buildable acreage.
Yeah, no.
And, okay, I'm going to go back and put that comment in um, here. Is there something in this section about not building in the hundred year flood plain? That's your question? in the hundred year flood plain? That's your question?
Yes, I thought the first draft had it. Um, I know it did, I mean, Nan and I have talked about it. And I wanted to talk about it, everybody, but it was not there. It's kind of hard to talk about.
Okay, I will, we'll put that comment in and then we will discuss. Okay. I'm coming back down. And so now we're the forest core overlay, which happily is all gone. There it is, gone. Okay, so that's Article five. So, uh, let's see what, what we're talking about with, with supplementary standards in Article six. Now, did someone do this section? Who was responsible for this section? I'm blanking.
I think Barb and I were
I think so too.
tackled this. And.
Uh, yes, it says from Committee B, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, it's just been so long, I, I honestly have, I'm remiss.
I think that's okay. I think what we'll do is come back and do this when we next meet. And I want to actually spend a few minutes talking about how we're going to meet over July and August and weather and September. And do we want to try to have, I think Nan had sent out something suggesting meeting on Saturday and, and Bruce said I work on Saturdays at this time of year. I wanted to see what other people wanted to think about. Do we want to make the meetings longer, more frequent, less frequent and longer? What do we want to do? And I also realize that many of us will be traveling probably in August. And what does that mean? And in general, as I travel, I can get on a Zoom, but I won't be here for at least one of the meetings when they would have normally had it. What are other people doing this summer and what is your life like?
I know I'll be traveling to the end of September, the last two weeks of September and I won't be where I can get.
Okay, so what, Bruce just said he'll be gone the last two weeks of September. Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have some travel in, in August and September. You know, I don't really wanna say what the dates are right now, but in a public setting.
Yeah, I'll send you, I'll send everyone some email and we'll, we'll try to get this straightened out. I would very much like to see, you know, a lot of the rest of this is, after we get through six and seven, we're onto a fair amount of stuff that we have site plan review where we have a law and we have to make some changes that people have, you know, like the one review rather than two step review, for instance. But that law exists. We have special use permits and we have a bunch of questions, I think, about that, you know, the issue that came up of making sure that we're not giving a tremendous amount of leeway to people that we don't think they should have necessarily. A committee.
Oh, but also the inverse, yeah, I mean, you don't want to make it too hard on developer.
Yeah, exactly. And non-conforming uses and structures. And then we've got, the, a lot of the rest of this is kind of bump, you know, it's enforcement and administration, zoning board of appeals, review board. Uh, it's kind of like, it's stuff that's already been written by countless people. So there's a certain amount of this, but a lot of this is uh, what we each need to do is read it, make the comments and then come back and try to get through this. I, I would prefer that we try to have slightly longer meetings if that's at all possible, because I think we'll you kind of get your head into it and you can move it along. I will send out an email to people with that as an idea, but I don't think we're ready to go on to section six tonight. We all probably need to read it and I think putting it into the Google Doc may help us be able to.
It helps so much because we can see other people's comments and we can, you know, kind of hear what's important to people and, and, yeah, it's a much more efficient way of doing this than sitting here reading it word by word.
I agree. So let's do that. Um, let's, we are scheduled right now to meet next week from seven fifteen to nine fifteen. Does anyone want to try to extend that meeting or are you happy with that timeframe?
I mean, I'm, I could see adding a half hour. I mean, I think that's about what I could do. I think after that, the brain gets a little fried. So I wouldn't want to go for three hours, but two and a half, maybe we could do.
How about seven to nine thirty? Would that work for people?
Sure.
Uh, can, can that be remote?
Absolutely, yes, we're, because there's a law in the town law that we can.
Well, well, also, I mean, the, the governor's order is till what, August fifteenth, you said, someone, or August thirteenth?
I can't keep up. I feel that the governor's orders are on a momentary basis. Exactly. So, okay, good. So August thirteenth, uh, so we'll be fine for that. And we'll, I will by mail try to figure out when we can meet in August with you know, a goodly number of people available to be online. Um, and I'll get this Google Doc up. Does that sound good to everyone?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I want to thank you all for everything everyone has done. We are, we are moving ahead. And I also want to tell you that my great nephew came and visited and cleaned out both the closet and the cabinet for me. So if any of you have relatives visiting or have organizational skills, I am happy to accept them as, you know, visitors to my home. It was delightful. About half of my family got these like overly developed sense of, uh, you know, the need to put labels on things like you open a cabinet and it's a giant stack of toilet paper, but there's a label that says a giant stack of toilet paper. And the other, the other half of us got like, our toilet paper might be scattered in four or five places throughout our house, which is clearly weird. So.
My three-year-old grandson just left and he wasn't real good at organizing.
He wasn't.
No, he was probably a disorganizing force, yes.
Yes, well, you know, entropy is what, entropy is what we're all about, isn't it? As we're in meetings, it's entropy. Right, fighting, fighting entropy. Thank you, thank you, everyone. I think we made some strides tonight. We'll try to write these up as, as plans. We'll be talking to Nan tomorrow or the next day, I forget exactly which. And I will get this document out to you guys in the morning. Thanks very much.
Thanks, everybody.
And we are closing down at eight fifty-four PM. You can go home and see the sun.